Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. If we could have roll call, please.
Commissioner Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Here.
Vice Chair Prickett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Chair Stephenson?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, and I will be leaving this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item?
Lisa, we're not sure what your agenda is.
Okay.
I'm Lee Rogers, this is Michelle Pierce.
Come on forward.
You want us to come here?
Yeah.
I'm Lee Rogers, and this is Michelle Pierce. We're owners of the Yule Pub right down the road. You can probably guess why we're here. I sent an email to everyone I heard back in America, I appreciate that, thank you, about the parking situation here in Troutdale. We're just kind of trying to figure out what the plan moving forward is. I do appreciate the information you sent us, but we were a little unclear on some of it, so we just kind of wanted to clear that up. Sorry. So, you said that there's a possible parking garage going in at the Confluence site, but we're not sure where the Confluence site is. Is that... you know what I'm talking about?
Go ahead.
Okay, so that's the site just north of the railroad tracks behind the outlet mall, that 19-acre site.
Okay, so then there'll be...
So, the long-term vision would be to have a parking garage on that site that's close enough to build a bridge over the railroad tracks, so folks would land into that northern parking area that's behind the shops on the northern side of the Detroit Highway, and then that would lead folks into downtown.
Okay.
You said that's a long-term goal. Is that something already in motion, or...?
Yes. We... I actually just sent in a kind of like a proposal, actually, to the Oregon Solutions Team to kind of get everybody to the table to start talking about this. And we're going to be... the city is going to be sending out a request for proposals for development of that site to development teams here in Oregon and kind of all across the Pacific Northwest to see if there's any interest in developing that site in the near future. And that request for proposal will be going out later this month.
What...
So...
So, this is Commissioner Minkoff, and what you're concerned about is what's going to happen in the immediate future, because you are up and running right now.
We're a little concerned.
And I can tell you that that will not be functioning as a parking garage for some years.
Right.
It is not an immediate solution.
We are working on a downtown parking study that is going to be wrapping up at the end of February, early March. And in this downtown parking study, we're developing a suite of parking management tools for downtown that our city council will be reviewing and considering different options to implement. That will help spur, you know, turnover, enforcement, and some things that businesses need.
So, all the kind of planning and solutions in the future are years out?
Well, the parking... so, that toolkit that's coming out this early spring, that'll be in council's hands this spring for them to review. It's going to be up to our council to consider what tools they want to implement in the near future and in the long term.
Finally, we buy tools?
Tools. So, tools for parking management downtown could be like better signage for people, like where city lots are to park. We could do parking times, saying this is, you know, these streets, we have two-hour parking. We could be doing better enforcement. So, there's a whole list of different tools that the city could be utilizing.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, you guys are close enough to know that what our immediate issue is right now is this construction parking is killing us. So, is there any kind of solution you guys can come up with to get these guys so they're not parking up? I mean, that's the only parking we have for our customers.
Well, here's the problem, is that there's... they're going to be utilizing off-street parking.
Right.
Or on-street parking, I guess, excuse me, not off-street.
Right.
They're building a certain number of parking lots or parking spaces for tenants that are going to be in that building, but all the rest of them are going to be on-street parking, which is going to take up a lot more of the spaces that you would need for your business. We have discussed this, I'll tell you, at length in many meetings that we've had in the Planning Commission, and unfortunately, our hands have been tied because that was county property, not city property. That was sold to a private concern, and so it ended up not being in our jurisdiction to make decisions.
Right.
As far as what kind of property, you know, parking is going to go there. We've been extremely concerned about the businesses.
I appreciate that.
But your immediate need, I will have a conversation with Brimlett Construction and their project manager on site. And have a conversation about where, you know, their folks are parking right now and to kind of make sure that they're not parking in front of businesses, making sure that if they are parking, it's very short-term, limited parking. And then I will also provide them places within the city, close to downtown, where their construction workers can park, so they don't impact downtown businesses.
But that's still not going to change for when the apartments open up?
Correct.
Unless, like, the only thing I can figure is like you guys said, two-hour parking, and that way people can't park there.
Even then, it's not going to change that there's going to have... it's 85 units, correct?
We're going to have 85 parking spots, correct?
But how many apartments really have one person that live, one car per apartment?
Yeah. We're... yeah, we're just having an influx of customers complaining about it to us, and obviously, you guys know there's a situation. We just wanted to make sure that we got our word out. Unfortunately, the owners' bandits were supposed to come, they didn't show up, and we talked to the people.
Sage.
On Sage Salon, they're having the same issue as well, that people cannot... literally, their customers are like, "I'm late, I can't find parking." One of the big complaints we've had is people will circle around two or three times, and then they'll go some miles. Now, we understand the Wayfinder brought in more stuff, and we're fine with that. We don't mind the competition stuff, but our big concern is...
Well, it's bringing more people to Troutdale, too, which is great.
The other thing that we're really concerned about is come this summer, when we're doing the first Friday, I mean, that's where everybody parked, is in that spot, where people are going to park now. So, I mean, I don't know that we have like a contingency plan for that, or anything.
Just for awareness, we did see this coming, and we tried to buy that property over there.
Yeah, I heard.
For Parkinop, but we got it by the county, and so we do have to find something else. We do need more parking.
Is the Foundry, is that kind of... because there's something like we could make a deal? Like, right now, we made a deal with the... or not a deal, like a hatching deal, basically, with the guy that owns the old Texco down there. He'll allow us to park our cars there, which is great, because keeps them off the street, so our employees are parking there. I don't know, maybe we can talk to the guy who owns the Foundry and park there, or...
It's a woman that owns, who lives in Vancouver, or something like that, who owns that property. And, yeah, so she's been difficult to even track down.
Yeah.
It's possible.
Okay, and this is great, this is public comment, so this is your time to come and talk to us, and it's our time to listen. We're actually not supposed to really respond, but I guess I would say in a nutshell, we realize this, and we are working on it, and we're doing everything that we can to mitigate the situation as it happens, and try to deal with what you're dealing with now. Try to get those people onto the construction site, you know, things like that.
Well, even if we could do that to start, that'd be great. I mean, that would help our... that's killing our lunch business right now, so...
I would bring it up with council on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday.
This next Tuesday?
Yeah, just to make them aware.
Yeah.
Because they're going to have more ability to do something than we will.
And that's here on Tuesday?
Yep.
I'm sorry, do you know what time that is?
Seven thirty.
And I have your contact information, and I will definitely be in touch.
I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Okay. But thank you for bringing that here, and...
Thank you for listening.
Making us aware.
Appreciate it. Now, is there... I mean, do you guys release this information as it comes out? Is there somewhere we could be looking to find out what's going on?
Yes, so for the downtown parking study, we do... I have a project website online. I will send you the link to that tomorrow, and then we update that regularly, and I know that the community advisory committee working on that project is going to be holding a meeting in late or early February, and I will send you that information, in case if you just want to join the meeting and to listen in.
Thank you.
That's good. All right, well, we appreciate your time, guys, and sorry for taking up yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah.
I'm sorry.
If you're not taking...
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the line, too, so thank you.
Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during public comment, unmute yourself. Seeing none? Okay, we will be moving on. Everyone receive a copy of the minutes.
Yes.
Of October 6th, October 9th, I'm sorry, October 30th, November 13th, and December 11th. Are there any corrections?
Chair Stephenson, we're going to be doing these one date at a time?
Sure, please.
Okay, do you want me to start?
Start with October 9th.
Okay, I can do that. Okay. See, you made it all the way to... I'm going by the page numbers of the individual minutes rather than the...
Packet.
Rather than the packet minutes, right? So, the number in the middle of the page, bottom of the page, not the bottom right. So, on page five of October 9th, I'll start with the paragraph about a little past halfway down, the paragraph that starts Commissioner Allen. There's a statement that reads, "Chair Stephenson also stated that climate-friendly, equitable communities would allow the applicant to install the minimum for this development, which is eight parking spaces." A figure, eight parking spaces, is based on the information that was in that month's packet, but that was corrected to nine spaces in subsequent packets. So, I just wanted to point that out. So, it's not really a correction to the minutes, because it accurately reflects, you know, what Stephenson, what Chair Stephenson stated. Next one, applicant testimony down at the bottom. Tracy Brown, Tracy is misspelled, there's no E in Tracy. Our four lines from the bottom of that same paragraph, there's a statement that says, I'm not sure who said this, but the statement is, "Part of the challenge for this site is that the parking overflow is a long way away. Someone may have to walk several blocks away." I'm not sure, I've never heard neighborhood parking described as parking overflow. That's kind of a mischaracterization. That's like saying Forest Street is the parking overflow for the apartment complex. And the final one on that page says, "Ground floor units will be accessible with an open-air staircase." Only one of the eight units, there's actually 15 units, but the only one with an open-air staircase was unit number 205. 205. Rest of them are actually enclosed within the buildings. So, I don't know, do you want to correct those or let them stand? Page six, under Opponets, on the first paragraph, it says, "All the neighbors have been there a long time. We heard from the neighbors, or most of them, the two on the north and the south have actually been there for decades. The ones on the east, the four lots on the east, are actually fairly new houses. They were built in the period of 2018 to 2020." So, we wouldn't describe them as long-term neighbors. I'll see, it looks like that's all I have for October 9th.
Okay, can you help me out here? Where are you saying "have been there for a long time"? Where was that at?
Under Opponets.
Under Opponets, the fourth line down.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that would be an understatement. Okay. So, the parking was on the one for me was, it was eight point something, or rounded to nine. But we can leave it eight, because that's, that was my statement. Tracy Brown, we should correct, and I think we should correct, ground floor, ground floor unit number 205 will have accessible with open-air staircase.
Well, that can actually be... 105 is ground floor, 205.
I'm sorry, 205. 205, ground floor unit. Unit 205 would be accessible with open-air staircase.
Right.
Okay. Any others?
What were we talking about? I was looking for the area. Okay, developments like this can cause parking overflow into neighborhoods. I think we were talking about that, that if there wasn't enough spaces, then it would overflow into the neighborhoods.
Right.
It's an official overflow area, but that's what happens.
Well, we weren't... I don't think we were talking about it. I think he was talking about it, right? Part of the challenge for the site is parking overflow is a long way away. There wasn't any parking overflow.
Right.
If there was parking overflow, it would be in the neighborhood.
That's what we were talking about.
So, if we want to amend that, that would be fine. If there was parking overflow, it would be into the residential neighborhood. Okay? That worked? All right, we want to prove that one is amended and move on.
This is Commissioner Andrews. I move that we approve the meeting minutes for October 9th, 2024, as amended.
I second.
Okay, we motion a second to approve the meeting minutes for October 9th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, those carry. All right, blistering along to October 30th, we will start with Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay, on page two of October 30th, I see a reference to the height range for the MU3 area, the Confluence, from 35 to 55. I want to come back to that later in the meeting, but I just want to say that what brought my attention to it was in the minutes. As far as corrections for that date, page three, up toward the top, under public comment or public testimony, let's see, starting with the second sentence, I guess, "Staff replied that the changes were not substantive in nature, but were for constancy and clarification." I think the word constancy should probably be consistency. And that's all I have for that date.
Okay. Motion to approve as amended?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Prickett?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended for October 30th, 2024.
Commissioner Andrews, a second.
Okay, we motion a second to approve the minutes as amended for October 30th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that one carries. All right. Onto November 13th. You are backup Commissioner Wilcox.
Don't think I have anything for the 13th.
Okay, so on the 13th, on page three at the bottom, Allen motioned to approve the two amended conditions of approval, and Leeny seconded the motion passed 4 to 1. We need to state what those additional conditions were, because they're not stated. So, if we do that, I would be fine. Can you... Chris?
This is Commissioner Andrews. I did note that in previous notes, the Travis Perla name, the last name is spelled differently than this one, and it is P-E-A-R-L-A, whereas the one that passed is P-E-R-A-L-A, so I'm not sure which one is correct, but I'm just pretty sure Allen said.
Okay. Okay, any other corrections? For November 13th?
What was the one from Zach? I couldn't hear.
Oh.
That Travis Perla, Perla's last name here is spelled differently than it has been in the past, on the opponent section and public testimony on page two.
Oh, right, okay, got it.
Okay. So, we have a motion a second, correct, on November 13th? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those? Okay, that one carries. All right, moving along. December 11th, meeting minutes. Commissioner Wilcox?
Okay, page one, toward the bottom, under numeral three, presentation, second line, Kittleson is misspelled, it's E-L, not L-E. Page two, under new business. A ballot measure passed in the last November election. The ballot measure actually failed, but the speaker did say passed, so it's not a correction of what was said, but the correction of the statement was not correct. Also, the next line down should be recreational retailers, rather than recreation retailers, with an A-L on the end. That's it for that one.
Okay, any other corrections to the meeting minutes of December 13th, or December 11th, I'm sorry? None? Commissioner Prickett?
On the first second page, under B, should there be spaces between those words? Because on my copy, it has spaces, the last second.
Yeah, I think it did that because it's on full justification.
Okay.
It's on what?
It's fully justified in word.
In other words, to let it line up on the left and right.
Oh, line up, correct. Okay, that makes sense.
Sometimes it spreads the words out.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve is amended?
I move that we approve the minutes for the November, or December 11th meeting of the Planning Commission on December 11th, 2024, as amended.
Commissioner Andrews, a second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the meeting minutes for December 11th, 2024, as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that carries. Okay, thank you. And now, we'll go on to case file 7517, marijuana facilities code update. And this one will be a type four. And before we open the public hearing for this, I will explain about the Planning Commission, the procedure that we will be following for the public hearing. Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms, bear strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes the final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council, who renders the final decision. This one is a type four procedure, and so the city council will be the final decision-making body, and Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the city council. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with the Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. Hearing proceeds as follows. Staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan, Development Code, or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may file an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date, or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open or the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. On case file 7514, the applicant is actually the city of Troutdale.
This is 7517.
I'm sorry, 7517. And this is an update to various parts of the Troutdale Development Code. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for case file 7517, marijuana facilities development code update. This is a type four application.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, commissioners. I'm going to share my screen really quickly.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox?
Um... Not sure you asked about issues with council... issues with Council, Commissioners. I just wanted to say before we get too far along that in the interest of transparency and full disclosure, I did submit a voter's pamphlet argument against the 26 to 48. I have no benefit either way as far as the voting goes, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. Is there anyone, anything else anyone wishes to declare? There isn't a ex parte communication because it's a type four hearing. So that does not apply any challenge to Commissioner Wilcox?
Oh, okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for bringing that up, sir, and we'll proceed.
All righty. Thank you very much. My name's Dakota Meyer. I'm the Associate Planner here with the city of Troutdale. I'll be presenting the staff report for the proposed text amendment, for a proposed text amendment to the commercial and industrial zoning districts under chapter three of the Troutdale Development Code under case file number 75-17. There are, there's primarily one change that's going to be happening with this proposed amendment, which is changing marijuana, the use of marijuana facilities from not permitted to a conditional use within the light industrial, the general commercial, and the general industrial zones. On your screen, you'll see a map that shows the general commercial in red, the the light industrial in a lighter gray, and then a general industrial in a dark gray. And again, we are changing the use for, the use for marijuana facilities from not permitted to conditional. Here's an overview of which chapters are affected. All changes will be taking place within chapter three of the Development Code. Under Troutdale Development Code, section 3.320, Use Tables for Commercial Zoning Districts, changing marijuana facilities from not permitted in the general commercial zone to a conditional use. And under section 3.420, Use Tables for Industrial Zoning Districts, changing marijuana facilities from not permitted in the light industrial and general industrial zones to a conditional use. Here is a depiction of the proposed changes and what they will look like. So here, these were in your packet. These are just some screen grabs showing what the change is. It's very simple. We're going from an N, which is not permitted, to a C, which is conditional, conditionally permitted. The rest of the tables remain the same. Staff finds that the approval criteria that will be used by both Planning Commission and Council have all been met. The approval criteria are the proposed change of the Development Code does not conflict with the applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change, and the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. As mentioned before, staff proposed that each of these criteria have been met. I want to go back and preface that this change, the reason why staff is moving forward with this Development Code amendment is in response to the denial of measure 26-248, which would have prohibited additional marijuana retailers within the city of Troutdale, therefore bringing the Development Code into compliance with the denied measure.
What was the final vote on that? I'm just curious.
I believe it was, I don't remember the exact number, but I know the percentage, I believe, was 54, 46%. Or 50, no, sorry, 59, 49, 51%. It was a very close vote. I can pull up the actual.
I can pull up the actual.
I think I have it. I thought I had it.
Is it in the staff report?
I can't remember if I put it in there or not.
That's pretty darn close.
But it was very close. I think it was a matter of less than 100 votes. Staff offers the following recommendation for the conduct of the January 8th, 2025 public hearing regarding the proposed amendments to the Troutdale Development Code. Staff recommend approval of the proposed text amendments to the city council for its consideration at the public hearings. City council public hearings are tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and for the introduction, and then March 11th, 2025, for the ordinance adoption. The earliest effective date of this amendment would be April 10th, 2025. If the matter is continued, the schedule will be affected. Thank you very much.
Okay, questions for staff? Oh, there he is. Commissioner Wilcox?
Yeah, as I've forwarded to you guys, I had problems with the, in favor of the changes to correct. It's just a matter of changing three letters. But the wording of the findings of fact, I had a problem with. I mean, the one in particular that says, "Proposed revisions bring the land use permitted into alignment with measure 26248." 26248 is measure 887, which is denying additional retailers. So it's, you're saying the exact opposite of what the reality is.
Right, so you're recommending the word denial of be put in front of that. Got that right?
Right.
Staff reviewed these?
Yes. Yes, we have reviewed the comments provided by Commissioner Wilcox and taken note of them, and I agree with his edits, and these will be added to the city council staff report for the findings.
Is the only facilities we're adding recreational?
Correct. Basically, what this is, for the long story, is back in, I believe it was October, November of 2023, we came in and did a code amendment to update the code to reflect ordinance number... Paul, I have it in my staff report here. One moment, please.
That's what I thought, too.
Ordinance 887 banning marijuana, that was remanded back to the voters. So we updated the code at that time to bring the Development Code into compliance with that ordinance. So that's why we went through and removed marijuana facilities, has not changed them from conditional to not permitted.
But did 887 allow processing?
Yes, it was only for retailers, marijuana retailers. So now that I went back to the vote and the measure was denied, we are now, basically we're just reversing everything we did under that previous ordinance to bring it back to how it was originally written prior to the, I believe it was, October 2023 meeting date or hearing. So prior to that ordinance, we're just reversing that ordinance.
Commissioner Prickett?
I have a question. Is, can we, on, make it up again? Under 3325 Additional Requirements, it says marijuana facilities licensed and authorized under state law when not located within 1,000 feet. Can we change that? Because, so these 1,500 feet? Or is that required by state law?
The 1,000 feet is state.
And it's as a crow flies, a straight line, a straight path from the property to set location.
Okay.
And to answer your earlier question, Chair Stephenson, the vote was a 61 vote differential.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
Sorry, Paul, I didn't read Paul's comments. Was there any substantive change to that or just a clarification?
Just a clarification. I did print them out, so everybody has one in front of them this evening.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah, so those red lines are what Commissioner Wilcox had submitted for edits to the findings.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So we want to, do we want to edit the findings to include these? Okay, that's presented? Okay. All right.
Chair Stephenson?
Hi, Commissioner Wilcox.
I had a question also. When 887 was passed, why were the two footnotes left in the, in the code? Because you had, that created conflicting, contradictory information in the code where you prohibited retailers across the board, but then you said elsewhere beyond 1,000 feet, they're allowed, but then they're not allowed. So why was that left in?
Why was it left in? When?
When 887 passed.
Okay.
So we, it was a decision, I believe we discussed it here at Planning Commission, but also it was a decision by staff to leave that, the footnote in, which is 3.325 Additional Requirements A. We decided to leave that in even though we were outright banning, just for the purpose of waiting until we had the vote. Because we can ban it and still leave it in there for the existing, because there is one existing that would have been grandfathered in regardless of what the vote came out to be. So it was a discussion to leave it in there for the time being. If the vote had passed, then we would go back through and remove that section. But since the work had already been done, that's from the state, it didn't harm anything keeping it in the code. So that's the reason why we left it in at the time. And I believe that was because we contemplated that and discussed that of whether or not we should remove it along with changing the use category. But that's, that's why, if I recall correctly, that's why we decided to leave it in when we did that code amendment.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, that's it for now.
Okay. The only other thing I have is I think we need to update the definition for school.
That was correct.
Along with this, when I went back and read through all the Lubbock files. Because if you remember, there was, the hearing was challenged because of the number of high school students that go to Mount Hood and the classes that they take. And so I'm going to read this. This would be at the end of our school definition as it reads. Would you like me to read the present school definition? Okay, the present definition is school, a public parochial or private institution that provides educational instruction to students under the age of 18 years, including accredited colleges and/or universities. This definition does not include trade or business schools. Okay, and so this would be in addition to that. For purposes of this code, a school includes a community college or other institution where students under the age of 18 years receive instruction to receive academic credits that apply towards elementary, middle, or high school grades K through 12, and which also apply towards college advancement requirements.
As Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Why do we restrict it? Because this was before my time.
Okay.
Why is this restricted to under the age of 18? Because some high school students are 18 before they graduate.
Right, the state definition of K through 12, okay, and the fact that it's considered 18 is kind of their blanket policy. But the situation that we have here is we have an excess of 260 high school students that go to Mount Hood Community College on a regular basis to take their classes.
Right.
And so, and 260 students is more than many high schools have. And so these are students that are literally as low as the eighth grade that are going to Mount Hood.
So we want to exclude Mount Hood from the definition of school?
No, we want to include Mount Hood in the definition of school.
Okay. So doesn't it, if you're using age as a criteria and the fact that it's an institution providing education?
That's why I'm proposing the amendment.
Let me see.
Okay.
It's for clarification.
Correct.
You're taking out the K through 12 part?
No, what I'm saying is K, there's a definition, the state has definition of K through 12, and the state has a definition for colleges. And I'm saying that in this particular community, Mount Hood acts along the same lines as what Reynolds High School does.
Okay, so you're incorporating. Thank you.
Chair Stephenson?
Commissioner Wilcox?
So did what you just read to us, is that on page 116 of the code?
No, what, the first part I read is what's on 116.
Okay, so I'm seeing the city's definition in the Development Code for school, a public parochial, public parochial or private institution that provides educational instruction to students, including accredited colleges or universities. I assume Mount Hood is accredited. So what's, I mean, what's the problem?
The problem is how the state defines school.
I mean, your definition expands on the state's definition, and as long as your definition is used in the footnote, that's the one that counts. Not to mention that if you're concerned about the Safeway Center, that's covered by the two neighborhood parks within 1,000 feet.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
How is that?
Yeah, it's like 1,140 feet to the park.
There is.
I've measured them on Google. Google says otherwise.
Pardon me?
It's about 900 feet.
Is it? Okay. Okay, I apologize. The under the age of 18 got added in there on me. Okay, so that part was not part of the Development Code, but the additional, what I'm recommending is the additional to basically call out Mount Hood because although Lubbock found in favor of the Planning Commission and the city of Troutdale, they would have liked to have seen that a little, written a little better. Do you agree with that, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I do. I do agree with that. I am not.
I am not, I'm turning.
You're not?
But there's, but there's an argument here in this definition because it says "including accredited colleges and universities," and Mount Hood is an accredited college.
Yeah, that's true.
But the state didn't, didn't deem it that way in their definition. That was the argument.
Oh, for marijuana, a thousand feet?
Right.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
And that's why.
This is Commissioner Minkoff. Can we, are we going to be able to look at the final draft of what you're proposing as amending this definition? Because you, what you read, you're saying now it shouldn't have included some of that language. Under 18, for example. What, what is the final version of what you'd like to see amended?
What I'm saying is adding, "For the purposes of this code, a school includes a community college or other institution where students under the age of 18 receive instruction to receive academic credits that apply towards elementary, middle, or high school grades K through 12 and which may also apply towards college advancement requirements."
I would agree because it clarifies and sticks with the spirit.
Yeah.
So that if Mount Hood, for example, did not permit high school students, five years from now, they say, no, we're not, we're not going to take on high school students. We're only taking on actual college-age students and so on, then they would be exempt from this thousand-foot?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what your intention is? By, by?
My intention is dealing with what we have today.
Can I make a recommendation?
You may.
Rather than adding it to the definitions?
You want to add it to the footnote?
I want to add it to the footnote because the definitions is for school as a whole, which that can, like, say, just another school or someone wants to do, you know, they, when I was in Hillsborough, we had a lot of the online schools coming in to help like after-school programs type thing where that falls under the school category, where it's easier to look at the definition of what a school is because it has accredited college. But for the purposes of this change, it'd be best, in my opinion, put it under the additional requirements for marijuana specifically because that's really what we're getting at here is we want to make sure that Mount Hood Community College is also, because there are students that go there from a number of ages that are under the age of 18, then we want to make sure that that's also included. Where I think if we put exactly what you wrote for the, starting with the, for the purposes of this code at the end of this footnote, the only thing I would change is what you, or amend what you had in there is have it match the term where "public or private school or college" and then, and then have that at the base of this footnote. That also keeps the amendment all inside one chapter. And it's a, it's a specific footnote, regardless of the specific edit, for the marijuana. So I think it'd be best to add it as a specific footnote because that applies to all, say another college were to go in, an accredited college somewhere, that would then cover that as well instead of just the brick-and-mortar college of Mount Hood, in my opinion.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
I think we could do that.
Okay.
Would you mind sending me the language?
I would.
And I would be happy to add that as a footnote, or add that in.
I would have printed it off, but my printer. So I apologize for that. You guys are having to listen to me read.
Technology.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'll throw that grenade out on the floor. So this would be an amendment. And it would be included in the footnote. We're amending the footnote. 3325A. And I doubt we'd have a school in the industrial zone.
I don't think we'd prohibit them.
But I guess we would.
That's, and that's why our develop, that's why the definition for school does not include trade schools. Because those, trade schools can be in the industrial area. For example, if you're doing a trade, a driving school, pipe fitting, thing of those nature, HVAC, typically those are done on the job and those are typically in an industrial. That's why school excludes those types from, from the definition.
So I think if we just add it there, we're good, right?
I think so.
I think so.
That's an easy, easy change.
All right.
Sounds good to me?
Okay.
One, Commissioner Minkoff, one, one modification. You would not need to include the language "public or private school" because school definition includes both public and private, so that would be redundant.
This is, this language is directly from the state.
Yeah.
So it was just, it was just pulled and put directly in that.
Don't get to changing. Sorry.
This, this whole footnote?
The whole footnote is directly from the state requirements.
All right.
That's why we are amending it by adding to it.
Sure.
But, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any, okay, since we've done that, any proponents wishing to speak? No? We don't have any, right? Any opponents? Neutral parties? Pretty quiet in here. Close it.
This is Commissioner Andrews. I move that we close the public hearing for 75-17 Marijuana Facilities Development Code Update.
I second. This is your, Commissioner Prickett, I second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, now. Motion to approve this amended.
This is Commissioner Minkoff. I'd make a motion to approve, what am I approving? The case file 7517 Marijuana Facilities Code Update as amended.
Yes, perfect.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Minkoff, second by Commissioner Prickett for approval of case file 7517 Marijuana Facilities Development Code Update as amended. Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Vice Chair Prickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
6-0, yes. Okay, we like this. All right. Guess what?
You do the nonstop.
Biological opinion? You can say that. Okay, are you doing it?
Yep. So this is, and I'm happy to show what, I'll, I'll bring up a document here and show you in a second. So FEMA came to all the states in Oregon, just a little bit of backstory on this. I believe it was in August notifying every city that they are required to either, they have to select what they call is a pick 'em. It'll be easier if I actually read the proper information for you because it gets a little bit in the weeds. Long story short, there is a lawsuit that a environmental agency sued FEMA with how they were, how they were handling EPA regulations when it comes to developments. The Environmental Group One, so now FEMA is requiring all cities to amend their code. And it's what they call pick 'em, so I'm going to pull up, so I give you the actual acronym because it is an interesting acronym.
This is 400, how many pages?
Oh, I think it's more than 400 pages.
Is it?
They're, they call them pick 'em?
So it's a pre-implementation compliance measure. So we were required by FEMA to make a decision on a pick 'em. We had a choice between three options. Option one was adopt a model code sent out by FEMA. I will say, it was both myself and Assistant Planner Nick were both in these meetings. We sat in multiple seminars and trainings to figure out which one we as a city decided was the best route for us to move forward with. The model code, they were late getting it out, very clunky, there was a lot of issues with it. So we opted, that's not the best idea to go and update our model code. The next option is a permit-by-permit basis. Essentially, we already require floodplain permits for any development done in the floodplain, so we're kind of already doing that. But the requirement is, is with this pick 'em, is anybody doing development within a floodplain has to show a no net loss of habitat. So they're required now to submit a habitat assessment report that meets the biopic. And again, I'll pull up, I'll pull up what it is. And that's basically passing it to the, it needs to be done by a certified, a certified floodplain management or engineer. They need to submit that to us as part of their, a part of their application materials for review. So let me actually, I'm getting to the document here. Or the third option was no development in the floodplain whatsoever.
The port might get a little excited about that.
Very much so. Given, so basically what it is, is that must include a flood habitat assessment report from a qualified expert evaluating any negative impact to floodplain functions and identifying appropriate mitigation measures to ensure that any development within, or any development will be in compliance with the 2016 National Marine Fisheries Service biological opinion of no net loss standards. So after discussing, after discussing this with both Erica and Nick, we decided our best bet was to continue with the permit, do the permit-by-permit application. It's what we're already kind of doing now, we just have to basically require an additional
Report?
Report that has to be, you know, done by a certified floodplain manager showing no net loss. We have a consultant, that's our floodplain manager, they're very up to speed on this. And we decided to go that route because one, the, like I mentioned, the model code was extremely clunky. It was not well-written, to be completely honest. It had a lot of contradictions within it, and they were still working on getting it out to us amended. And then having no development in the floodplain, that affects a large number of citizens within the city. There's a lot of floodplain within the city, also a lot of the vacant land in the city, especially in the industrial area, any floodplain on there, you wouldn't be able to do any development. So for example, if you live on Jackson Park and you want to put a shed, you then need to show a no net loss or absolutely have zero shed. You can't build on it at all. So that's why we decided to go with the permit-by-permit basis. FEMA gave us until December 1st to make the decision. And then following that is now we have to amend our code to require this additional report. So I'm just going to share, share, this is the draft language, I just read it off, but here is where we're planning on adding it, so you guys can all see it. So here is our, this is our floodplain section, chapter 14. And we are planning on adding, I'm just going to scroll up and I'll go back down to it.
How are we defining habitat? I mean, are we talking like slug migration and things of that nature? What are we talking about here when we say habitat?
That is a great question. It's all habitat. No habitat loss, zero. They're not going down to that. I think it's mainly focused on streams and salmon, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
It's more fish, salmon barrying.
It's one thing if it's lined out as salmon-bearing streams, but it's something else if it's defined as habitat.
And so it's defined as habitat for FEMA, given that is the EPA guidelines. FEMA is basically, they're primarily focused on waterways and the riparian area around water.
But how exactly are we going to enforce that when habitat is so nebulous?
Guess it's up to the engineer.
Well, and who's, yeah, it doesn't make sense.
Well, and I wonder what no net loss means in real terms. Can I do some development in a floodplain and then I have to go create some floodplain somewhere else so that the net is zero?
Yes. Yes, except for it has to remain on-site. Typically, how we do it now is if there isn't enough location, enough area on-site, we will allow a developer to do the mitigation elsewhere, within the same habitat.
And now it has to be on-site.
Now it has to remain on-site.
I just want to say.
And they would show that.
And they would have to show that. And that's, so under submission requirements is where for a flood development permit, and that's why we would add, this is the language. And that's where it says they have to show any mitigation meets the no net loss standards that are set out by the National Marine Fisheries Services, Fisheries Service Bio, Bio opinion.
So I'm going to go down a little trail here.
Please.
Please do.
Okay, so when TRIC got built, Amazon, FedEx, all of that, right? The Port of Portland worked with a number of agencies and created 88 acres of wetland mitigation that is off-site from these other developments on different properties. But it counted towards their mitigation. Now, what this mitigation did was it created flood storage. So when you have a situation like 1996, there's a place for the water to go when you can't put it in the river. This was a really big deal.
Yeah.
This was a big deal. And it sounds like now we're saying all of this mitigation has to happen on-site. So something like this, right, would not be possible in this scenario.
I believe, for, and again, what we've gotten from FEMA has not been great. I'm going to start with that.
Okay.
FEMA doesn't know what they're trying to explain to us in a lot of these meetings. I believe if the requirement is, it all has to be on, on-site. I'm also unaware, I can't speak to it, but I, I also think, I remember hearing in one of the seminars that for large developments, there can be a, not a very, but you know, like, there could be a
An exception.
An exception, thank you, to do it elsewhere. Especially, for example, a lot of, a lot of sites in our industrial area, they're considered floodplain, but they may have, they may, that might be old. That might be from the 96 flood where it flooded one time. And it's not actually a floodplain. That happened a lot in Hillsborough when I worked there too. And so basically, they need to have a floodplain manager go out and assess and see if this is, this shows as a floodplain on the map, it's no longer a floodplain, it can be removed from the floodplain mapping. So that could also be the case in some areas, especially in our, in our northern section of Troutdale. If they can prove that this is not a floodplain, it is not an active floodplain, it has not been an active floodplain for a one-hundred or five-hundred-year flood, then it could be potentially removed. The only issue with that is FEMA is no longer doing lomers or clomers until the end, this all sunsets in five years. So that's another reason why we decided not to update, do a model code is because our code is already very stringent than, more strict than most. Our floodplain and VECO sections are long and detailed. So I think our code is better than what FEMA came out with personally. It's more strict on what you can do. And also, the model code from FEMA sunsets in five years, no one's going to be required to do it after five years. So that's why I think the permit-by-permit basis requiring one more thing is the best. But with FEMA no longer doing lomers and clomers, then map changes, basically flood map changes are completely on hold for five years.
Excuse me, what's a lomer and clomer?
Letter of Map Amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and so you, property gets mapped and then you can petition to have your property remapped, which usually you'd rather
It takes about a year and a half.
Yeah, it takes about a year and a half to two years.
Commissioner Andrews.
Sure, thank you. Is this going to, I'm not exactly sure where the floodplain lies on all of the properties, but obviously I have the most up-and-coming development in mind, so with the art, like the Confluence site, is that going to be impacted by this?
The Confluence site will not be impacted. Because there is the levee or dygo on the side, so it's actually, when that was constructed that way, while I think it actually is at floodplain. It is not within the floodplain or VECO.
But you also mentioned the term habitat.
Habitat.
So it's not just a floodplain definition, it's a habitat definition as well. So
Correct.
It sounds to me like FEMA is saying every square inch across the entire country of whatever is considered habitat, we cannot lose a single inch of habitat to any development because you have to have no net loss of habitat.
I believe it is specifically referring to floodplain
Floodplain.
Areas in habitat impacting floodplain areas.
Yes.
Okay, they're not separate?
No.
No, yeah, it is habitat, but it's habitat within the floodplain. So basically, it's floodplain area, our VECO, our vegetation corridor. Those are our standards, basically that area, we have mitigation requirements for that. They have to show no net loss instead of a percentage of loss, I think, which is the current standard that we have. You can go up to a certain, I think it's five or ten percent loss, but you still have to mitigate. Say you're building something completely within floodplain area and the vegetation corridor, you still have to mitigate up to ten percent loss. Now it's a no net loss, so you have to mitigate back to a hundred percent. The big question that everybody has, which I've already heard, is how do we, what is no net loss? That's been asked not only by our city, but every city across the state, across the state. FEMA doesn't have an answer for that. So basically, we're relying heavily on the report that we get to make sure that there is no net loss. And then also relying heavily on our floodplain managers who have a little bit deeper of an understanding on this lawsuit.
So legally, right, can we put this into code when we don't know how it's to be enforced?
Well, we are, we're implementing it.
We're implementing it, but how are we going to enforce it? Because we don't know.
How we enforce it is, if we, right now, we receive a ton of, not a ton, but we do receive floodplain development applications. We're enforcing it by making sure that report's there. And then since right now, we have, we have a consultant that does all of our floodplain management, we send it off to her to review. If she finds that it does not meet the Marine Fisheries Bio, then it doesn't pass until they meet that, those requirements. So that's how we're enforcing it, is by the floodplain managers reviewing to make sure that that report they submit meets the standard set out in the biological opinion.
But the consultant's a private contractor, right, and so the city's still making the decision. So the city would be on the hook for making the decision. So I guess what I'm saying is, how do we make a decision when we don't know what the criteria is for enforcement?
That's been a large discussion. I will say, there has been a lot of discussion of whether these standards are clear and objective. And who is to, you know, who's, if something were to happen, who is, who's to come back on? Because we're not the only city that uses consultants. Like I said, I've been in, the first meeting, I think, had two hundred cities in it, and you should have heard the meeting.
Really?
FEMA got ripped apart, to say the least, because a lot of these questions came up. FEMA is supposed to continuously be like setting, putting out documents to help with this. So far, they have been very responsive and putting out in more and more information. It's just a little bit slow as they're figuring it out. But the reason why we have to move forward with this is that if we do not, if we as a city do not move forward with one of these pick'ems, then we are essentially removing ourselves from our floodplain insurance program, the FEMA flood insurance program. And that's something that we as a city do not want to do. If we choose not to do anything that they, that they, any of these pick'ems for the next five years, we lose our flood insurance standards that we currently have.
Just, that almost sounds, sorry, like extortion to me. We don't know, we don't know what we want you to do, but you need to adopt it, and if you don't adopt it, we're going to penalize you for it. Have I got that right?
Sounds like a lot of tax law to me. Not clear, and the IRS doesn't know how to adjudicate it.
That's exactly what Nick said when we were discussing it. He's like, it sounds like I'm doing my taxes here.
Believe me, I'm actually trying to help you here.
Right.
I, I'm not sure what FEMA does anymore. I thought they used to take care of like floods and things. And first off, with the way you're doing mitigation, you're not going to help anybody. Because you're going to prevent the very thing that Troutdale has done the most in the last forty years to assist with floods. You would actually prevent anything like that from happening again.
Well, yeah, we have, we have floodplains that used to be floodplains, maybe a hundred years ago or so, before dams came in and controlled the water.
No, what I mean is you effectively had a place designated to hold the water.
Right.
Right.
For habitat and for flood storage, and that's huge. And now you're saying, FEMA is saying, we don't want you to do that anymore. We don't want you to do anything like that, it makes too much sense. It might save lives.
But I agree with that.
I'm a little salty because I was pretty involved in this, and this was, a lot of people worked really hard to do this. And I think it was a very good thing, and this is just like a slap in the face, really.
I think when FEMA makes all these, they don't live in the area of a, I mean, granted, they have to hold the United States, but they don't, when they come visit, they don't check it out first before they make their
Yeah, Louisiana is very different.
Right, it's different than Oregon, but they don't check it out, they just make a blank statement, which means if we've already, are already doing that, basically, then why do we need to make it harder? Because we're trying to make development easier, but now you're making it harder.
Here's, here's what I
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Andrews.
Thank you. Is there, I guess, in terms of what, if anything, can be done about this situation? As FEMA comes out with more materials, since we don't have to adopt it until December, is there like a feedback line that we could ask for? Like you mentioned, there's exceptions potentially, so is there some way to pass input up to where it's like if we have a certain mile radius or something like that, that we can, obviously, like, you know, what we've done in the past, based on the situations? Is there a way for you, I guess, channel that up and see if they can continue rolling out something different? Or is that, is it just kind of the done deal?
This is
This is what it is.
This is what it is.
Okay.
It was, it was, it was dropped on, this, all I know is the state of Oregon. It was dropped on the state of Oregon in August, we were told we had to have a decision by December 1st. And as of
Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four, we had to have a decision. So now we're amending our code to be up to date with the requirements of FEMA.
It was the best of the three options.
It was the best of the three options.
I would agree that what you did was the right amount. I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean
And, and where the floodplain is and this whole bit, it's going to be
Yes, so for example, here's a map of our industrial area.
Case by case basis, and maybe as time goes by, it becomes more clear.
And that's, I think, what everybody's kind of hoping. Like I said, we're not the only jurisdiction that, I mean, not the only state that is in, that is in uproar about this. I was in a meeting with people from even Oklahoma, I think they had a whole lot of floodplain in Oklahoma, but I don't know anything about Oklahoma, and they were just as upset about this. I will say that they have been very responsive, but they are still rolling out information that we need. And on some of the things that you can tell they don't know yet, their answer is a non-answer. So we're just kind of waiting for them to give us the information. We felt that we didn't want to wait for an amended, their model code that's going to be amended, that is better written to come out. And also, I will state that if, say, we chose to go with the model code, that regardless, every city that chose to go with the model code has to go with the permit-by-permit until it's adopted. So that's why we just said, why change it? Well, amend our code to require this, this extra report. Because looking at their model code, our code is stronger. And the only thing we have to change is that we don't require a habitat assessment report. So if we do that, then we meet the requirements that they, that they have. Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Minkoff.
Thank you. I have no doubt that, well, what I see is a federal agency that's being reactionary, that they just had a lawsuit, now they've got to cover their butts. And I have no doubt, because I see it all the time in the tax field, that they're, they're opening up, that it opens up for a great number of more lawsuits, which will happen over these next five years, I'm certain of it, which will again modify their requirements over and over and over. So I, I would say that the, the best course of action, you, I, I agree that you did the right thing on our behalf, thank you very much. And that we just comply, and I, I get Chair Stavenson, your, your ire at what FEMA is doing. However, we just comply with what they are requiring us to do, and I think on a case-by-case basis. Make that modification, stay in touch with other cities. There's a league of Oregon cities, I don't know any of that, and stay in touch and see what it is they're doing, which may impact. And I, I'm certain that that paragraph you want to add in there is probably going to be up for renewal and modification over this next five-year period.
Most certainly, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I doubt that judges and lawyers in the case was looking at little Troutdale even understand what Tanny's talking about, right? So they're not at that level of detail. And so it's going to be a bit crazy, and then most people don't actually understand what we call floodplain these days. It used to be pretty obvious, but not so obvious no more.
We don't even necessarily know what, we don't know what MCD, well, I know they changed their acronym now, but A, MCD is doing because they have, they have to have certain requirements as well for their levees and things, so that could affect things, things of that nature. I mean, I guess I was in meetings with over two hundred cities across Oregon and then other cities. One of the meetings we were in had FEMA members that, had members from Florida. And, you know, they have the same, they have water everywhere, and their floodplain is very different. And how do they manage that? Because their floodplain changes on a yearly basis.
Yeah, I remember when I was on council, ours was rising, our floodplain was rising at that time.
In Florida, the floodplain goes from Tallahassee all the way down to that's the whole, the floodplain, the whole state.
I lived on in South Dakota, Cheyenne River, and it changed course all the time depending on where it flooded. So you could have, some person gained property, some person lost property. So the floodplain can change whenever the waterway decides it wants to change it. So, yeah, you did the best. I mean, I totally agree with what you did, because it makes it easier all the way around. Harder for us because we've worked on making sure that we don't have another flood issue like we did in nineteen ninety-six. I mean, when you see somebody's home floating down with them in it, it, it's scary. So we, the city council then and now, you know, we all worked on making sure that didn't happen again, but we have to make the best of what we're given.
Tanny's right, this is going to hurt, right?
It's going to hurt, yes.
But how do we reduce that?
Yeah.
Well, a couple of things. First off, I applaud staff
Right.
for not taking the easy way out, because you could have. And I applaud you for not doing that, and I applaud you for going the extra mile and trying to make this as palatable for the residents of Troutdale as you possibly can. Okay, with that said, there's been tremendous work done on floodplain management in this area. And this undoes a lot of that work, and that's what I want to say for the record. This undoes a lot of work that's being done. The federal government is asking us to enforce an inenforceable standard. We don't define habitat, but we're supposed to enforce it. Somebody's going to take us to task on that, and I hope FEMA's got our back. Because they're asking us to do something that we really can't do. And frankly, they're asking us to do something that's not in the best interest of our citizens. But I also understand the floodplain insurance program and model. I get that. I'm just saying, I, I think this is really poor governance, poor leadership on FEMA's part, and I can't stress that enough.
I would have to agree with your words.
And I will, I will be talking to FEMA and I'll say the exact same thing to them.
Well stated.
So our goal here is to bring that language to the next planning commission as a code amendment to amend our code and look for recommendation to council to update, so that we are in compliance with the pick'ems. It's, it's going to be an interesting staff report to write, I'll say.
Can we have the lawyer look at it too, just to see?
We've, we've had many meetings with him.
He's actually very good at this.
Yeah, we, actually, Erica, myself, and Nick sat down with him and discussed with him, are these clear and objective? Because there was, there was, initially, there was a lot of pushback to DLCD. DLCD said to go ahead and move forward with it, and then there was, I can't remember if it was the state attorney, or someone said, don't, don't make a pick 'em, we're if it was the state attorney, or someone said, don't, don't make a pick'em, we're looking to see if this is clear and objective, uh, for the state standards. And ultimately, uh, they're still looking into it, I believe. So, but ultimately, in order to keep our flood insurance, we need to move forward, uh, with amending our code. We do get floodplain development permits. We don't get a ton of them, uh, but we do get them, and, uh, and that's also, we get a floodplain development permit for any sort of development that has floodplain on site. They might not be affecting, they might not be building in the floodplain, but they still have to do a floodplain development permit to make sure and show. So sometimes it, it might not, they might not have to actually do anything. Just show, here's a report, we're not touching any habitat. It's like, cool, we're good. We don't need to, you don't need to worry about it.
But you don't get a lot of floodplain permits, but many of them that you get are developments that are in the hundreds of millions of dollar range. Most of these aren't small, small things. And they do have a big effect on the city, you know, the populace, employment base, the tax base, those things. So I just don't want to say that, you know, we don't have very many of these, they're not very important.
No, they're, they're, they are important, and that's why I think we're, we're the only city I know of that has done, like that I've worked for, that's done floodplain development permits. Uh, I've worked in other ones, they, they call them slightly different things, but we have one that's specific for floodplain, uh, rather than just the habitat or, you know, vegetation corridor and sort of, uh, environmental base. So I know how important it is, especially being in Troutdale, having a lot of floodplain. We have a couple of different streams, creeks, plus two large rivers, uh, that border our city. So, I mean, that's, we are the definition of floodplain. So we will be moving forward with this, how we wanted to update you all, uh, so that way we don't just come with a, a.
A random amendment.
A code amendment and wonder why. So we wanted to give you just an update on this is what's coming down the pipe for next planning, uh, planning commission.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All you've done.
You're very welcome. We're trying to, try to navigate it as best we can with the information that we have.
You're up.
Oh, uh, twenty twenty-five planning commission goals. Well, first, I want to congratulate the planning commission for, for, for Landry's review case files in twenty twenty-four. Planning commission more than doubled your reviews in twenty twenty-four. You saw more reviews in twenty twenty-four than you did in twenty twenty-three. We didn't have any cases, go to Luba.
Yay.
Yay. You made great findings.
Those that gone to Luba have been up till.
I know, but, and staff has done excellent, um, uh, reports. So tonight, I just wanted to open up for discussion, um, and kind of talk about a work plan for this next year, and I can talk about some of our existing projects that are going to be coming your way, um, such as CPEC. We have to implement those standards by June thirtieth of this year, so we'll be making, we'll be coming back with that code package of amendments in, most likely, um, in May. I am going to be giving a, an update to council at their January twenty-eighth meeting on CPEC and talk about, uh, what planning commission has seen and kind of, uh, what information planning commission has asked for over this past year, and to let them know that planning commission, when we talk about parking reform B, we're looking, your planning commission's preferred option is to move forward with taxing a commercial parking lot and looking at, if, if employers employ fifty or more people, that they would provide an extra fifty-dollar stipend per employee that if they use an alternative mode of transportation every day to get to work, they would get that stipend. Um, and we would be, we would make some additional code changes in our code to implement that. And those code changes actually don't have to come to planning commission, because they would be in the municipal code and outside of our development code chapters. So we would be making changes to our, uh, business licensing, um, chapter, and we would create a new chapter for taxation of commercial parking lots as well, and coming up with a program for that. So that's one big work item that's coming down the path in twenty twenty-five for the commission. And I'm, 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 just want to have throughout this conversation, have a healthy conversation here about what the commission's goals might be, and hear from you.
Are we okay with an unhealthy conversation about that?
I thought we were over the FEMA discussion.
What's, um, what's generally speaking, I, I, I haven't been on the commission that long, but I guess was generally speaking, kind of like within our scope to propose as a, as a commission ourselves?
A lot of times, it's projects. What we typically do is we have projects that we work on that, in addition to our cases.
The code amendment updates.
The code amendment, and we did the omnibus, and I'm recommending that we start doing a short bus, um, because there's already a couple of things, like the, um, a couple of the definitions I think need to be tweaked. And so that would be, that would be one recommendation for me. I think like the, you know, the high-density residential also allows for commercial, but it doesn't say anything about that in there. So I think we just need to tweak those and make those a little clearer. Another thing, since I'm talking, I'll just throw these out. I think the planning commission should kind of review a little bit of what TCAB's role is as far as development reviews. What does TCAB look at? What does planning look at, and how do those interact?
And how they, they work together?
Yeah.
Yeah. We could probably come up with like a workflow.
Yeah, because I think there's a little confusion there, and I think we could clear that up, and that would help both groups.
But we also heard, uh, on the TCAB committee, the, um, CAC sometimes is left out of the loop too sometimes. And they would like to be a little more.
Yeah, and, and CAC is working more towards community involvement, which I think is a very good thing. Trying to get more people engaged and trying to get the word out. I don't know if you could ever get the word out enough, you know? Or where people think it's enough, but, um, I, I know they're working pretty diligently on that.
Yeah, just to figure out on that, I think that would be helpful. I mean, TCAB, I know there's been discussions historically, and now that we have a couple of members that moved from TCAB onto city council, um, there were some, I think, calls to kind of redefine what the areas of opportunity were that are covered by TCAB and what exactly their scope was in terms of how they worked, so that that might actually be helpful to bring some clarity to this.
Right. And we need to a little bit, because there's been some modifications to what TCAB's review with, review purview is versus what TCAB thinks their purview is.
Sure.
And so I think we just need to kind of get those lined out a little bit better, yeah.
This is Commissioner Minkoff. Having sat in on several budget committee meetings, there is always a list of projects that they have to budget for, but ultimately can't accomplish because of restricted financial resources. But the decision on which projects to get done seems to lie pretty much on staff. The city manager and the budget manager and so on, they're the ones that are generally proposing what it is, um, that they believe needs to be done, and then like, they get a rubber stamp from city council. But my, my reason for bringing this up in the planning commission meeting is, is there any input? Is there a place for planning commission to make, give any input to what projects ought to be moved higher in the priority list or lower, whatever?
The planning commission wouldn't make a formal recommendation. What planning does is planning approves the master plans. So the action plans, the master plan, all of those pieces all go through planning when they're done, and then typically, staff determines which projects get moved onto the front burner and get proposed into the budget. And then the budget committee decides which projects actually are going to be funded. And so quite often, there are projects that get funded but don't get done, because there's not an ability to do them. So it's not always that there isn't money to do them, a lot of times, there's not staff bandwidth, or, you know, you can't get a consultant, or you can't contractor, or the weather's not good, or, um, a number of things.
I just remember that discussion with the planning, yeah, okay. Wasn't sure.
But we could simply make a suggestion, but we can't do a formal recommendation of which projects get done. Anyone else? Commissioner Wilcox.
Uh, I don't have my thing right offhand.
Okay.
I also want to let the planning commission know, we did receive a sixty-five thousand dollar grant, um, from Metro's Community Planning and Development Grant Fund, and. And, uh, this, uh, the grant funding is projected to do a, do a code audit, uh, similarly, similarly to the hall, the previous Halsey Corridor Development Design, Design Guidelines. I know, and we, we, planning commission, it's not going to be the same. So, and you know.
Starting from scratch.
We, we're starting from scratch, planning commission gave the thumbs down, we moved. This is brand new. And we're going to be kicking off this project probably in late spring. So that's.
What are we doing?
So this, we received the twenty forty Metro grant for sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, basically to do a code audit, code audit, to look at design standards along the Halsey Corridor. When we had come in for the main streets on Halsey project, uh, and, you know, we, we voted that down, uh, here and council, one thing that we took from planning commission specifically was, while we didn't like the overarching code amendment that was there, we had to close it to close out that other grant. We did like, uh, some, there were some aspects of it that.
We did like.
We did like. Uh, some of the, you know, street scape, some of the designs, uh, as far as building facade, um, you know, materials, things of that nature, to try to feel like you expand the downtown along Halsey, you know, have it expand west. So we went out for this grant, we got the grant, toward now, we want to team up with a, a consultant and have them help us do a code audit, uh, or, uh, to look at the code, see areas that we can do certain design standards and things of that nature along the Halsey Corridor. And of course, there's going to be a lot of public engagement. This is just Troutdale, is not including any other city, uh, and we're doing a lot of, uh, community engagement, a lot of work sessions here and with CAC, uh, and then also hopefully with the citizens and the businesses along the Halsey Corridor, uh, to receive feedback and how we would like to envision the Halsey Corridor moving forward into the future.
Yeah, it seems like ideas that we're going to make up better.
Commissioner Minkoff?
I have two questions. Will we be interviewing strictly Troutdale consultants to, uh, who will pay the sixty-five thousand to do the code audit, so that this money benefits Troutdale truly? Secondly, do we have a budget for the Halsey Corridor that includes code revisions, code design, consulting work, and so on? And then actually implementing those ideas, some kind of framework, so that we already did a study? How much was, was that, the, the design study? You know, that a grant was given, it was paid out, now we're getting another sixty-five thousand. I, I see all over the metro area, grants being received, and they go to all kinds of planning, and then nothing happens. There's no implementation. So my question is, how does this sixty-five thousand fit into our budget to finally accomplish?
Okay.
What we need to get done?
This sixty-five thousand's a grant. So it's in the budget as a revenue and expense item, it doesn't increase or change the budget for the city at all, it's an in and out.
Is, I'm not talking about a budget for the city.
You were asking about the budget for it.
Budget for that particular project.
When the council passed the last rendition of the TSP, they passed the, what is it, fifty-seven million, I think, total? Is that right?
Of all the projects combined?
They passed the fifty-seven million for the projects on Halsey.
Okay.
Okay? So some of those will be funded through SDC charges, and they will be funded through other sources. But there's fifty-seven million in projects that are on the books for Halsey as a result of the Halsey Plan.
And it's been determined that fifty-seven million is enough money to get whatever we need to get done, done, along the Halsey Corridor.
Those are, Halsey's not that big, and fifty-seven million's a lot of money.
Those were more of the larger infrastructure-style plans. What we do, like right now, is when doing the last code amendment that was between the three cities, uh, that we felt Troutdale wasn't heard, and like our opinions and, uh, thoughts weren't being held in the same as the other two cities. What this is, is taking that kind of base, because that, we didn't like what they came up with for that, and just focusing on Troutdale specific in that section, uh, to then, ultimately the goal is, and we have to have, we have to have, in order to finalize this grant as well, we have to come with another code amendment, and either vote it in or vote it down. The goal is, hopefully, that with it just being Troutdale, no other cities involved, that we can really get the citizens' feedback, business owner feedback, really work through it with our CAC and our planning commission, just us, not between the cities, that we can come to something that is a great code package, so that we now we have design standards for, if a new building, say, goes in off the corner of Halsey and two fifty-seven, we have a specific design standard that they have to meet, similar to our design standards of our downtown. Maybe not the exact same, may want to change it, but that's what we're going to discuss. But hopefully, you know, I know in the previous plan, something that we liked is, uh, the recess entry, or like the corner access, rather than having it just a flat building. You know, certain design standards of that nature, where if it's over forty-five feet, you have to have in, in, a recess, so it's not just one flat, long building along a full, large block. Things like that, that then we can get into our code, so whatever comes in, we can have them change. There's a couple of properties that are safe for sale, if they, someone wants to demo it now, they can build whatever the base standard is, they don't have to build to our downtown center standards, because it's not in our downtown. So this would hopefully have specific standards that then we can make it look more cohesive, because right now, our downtown, you know, stops at two fifty-seven. I think it'd be great if we could have that extend along the Halsey Corridor, down till it hits Wood Village and, you know, so that we can have a cohesive look and have our downtown. down till it hits Wood Village and Fairview, you know, so that we can have a cohesive look and have our downtown really expand uh, with just newer businesses and so keep the same feel along that, that corridor. So ultimately that $65,000 is used to do the research, put together a code amendment that then we will, it's, I hope that it will be rock solid that we could have it pass through planning commission and pass through and then we'll have a brand new code. Uh, even if, I don't think we'll be doing an overlay per se, because that section is still incorporated in the town center overlay. But incorporating some of those aspects of town center along that section would be great.
Especially with our new mayor taking a page out of Trump's new playbook, which is going out and annexing uh, Fairview and Wood Village and Gresham and uh, and then Iceland as well, cause I think we're gonna incorporate Iceland into.
I guess I would just say, my, my knee jerk reaction would be send the check back for the 65. And you're thinking, why would he say that? We're, oh, just so you know, we're 0 for 2 right now. With grants for Halsey streets. The first one was, was terrible, absolutely terrible. The second one was almost as bad. And I hope this one's better because it's gonna be done by us. I really do. Because if it's a repeat, I, I personally wouldn't want to be involved in it at all.
Well, how much latitude are they giving us?
It's our, it's, it's our project. No one else is involved. They don't have any oversight. The only oversight they have is we have to show them what we're spending the money on with the deliverables that we have to send them like, hey, we did our community engagement, here's our memos. We, you know, we, here's our work session, here's our memos from our work sessions with our two work sessions, three work sessions with planning commission, our work sessions with CAC, our public outreach, send that to them and all of that comes into our potential code package. All those discussions, hopefully we'll have a nice tidy code package. No one else is involved other than Troutdale. This is strictly about Troutdale.
I'm, I'm just saying, and you remember, when this was done before and it was the three cities together, nobody cared. Nobody cared what the planning commissions thought. Absolutely did not care. Could care less. They only cared what the city councils thought.
That's true.
Well, our goal is to, I mean, for us at least, our mindset is that this is a bottom up approach. We want to get the citizens' full, undivided like input into this. So that would then to really get an idea of what they want, then we can bring it here and see what's actually feasible based on these ideas that the citizens want.
And that would be great.
Move it up the chain with then city council just looking at it and being, this is a code amendment that's coming in front of city council to update our code with these standards. We want it to be a planning based, planning first mentality in my opinion of, uh, like a vision for the, the corridor. Up until Wood Village, of course. The Troutdale version or portion of the corridor.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the apprehension about it, but it does sound like we have the cards stacked in our favor with this time uh, around and honestly, I mean, I, it's gonna be essential, I think, for us to really take, I mean, that corner right there where Halsey starts, like you said, it kind of stops, but like that is the like linchpin for making the entire thing work, because if it doesn't connect properly, nobody's gonna bother walking down the street or going down there anyway. So like if we can really focus our resources in on that, whatever, whatever we have to do to lay out like the proper expectations from the get go of like where we're gonna be wanting to focus everything the most, so it's not just the you know, willy nilly, like one size fits all, like whatever down the street, like really like kind of prioritize that outright. I think we could really make some good progress and especially, I, I appreciate where you guys are coming from. I think that's essential to really make sure everyone has a chance to be involved and voice their.
Take 257th and dig underneath Halsey.
And, and, and I agree with you. I agree with you. I'm just saying, it's like, I think it needs to be done better. Because when it was done before, it was basically frankly, some consultant welfare program with a couple of hodgepodge marks on Halsey.
And I think we heard that when we were going through the planning commission's city council hearing process. And we, and we also heard through that process that there were some good things in that plan that we would like to move forward. And this grant opportunity provides that for us without the city spending our.
Right. Part of the money, yeah.
And like you had mentioned, it happened twice. First one was terrible, second one was slightly better. Third one's a trial.
Hey.
Yeah, I know.
It's just us on this one. So we can do what we want to do and have, uh, like, for us at least, like I mentioned before, it's really to have some design standards for any new development that goes in there. There's a lot of properties that are opportunity sites listed out that we would love to have design standards to make it a walkable area, make it an area that's worth it. I also know that this is kind of coming at a perfect time with the main streets on Halsey, streetscapes kind of getting close to wrapping up with the things that they want to do with our, just the streets with the sidewalks. That's not all gonna happen immediately. We're not gonna just all of a sudden start construction, cause there's gonna be grants and things that come with that or part of that 57 million. Uh, as that'll, you know, those sections will be rolling out similar to how we're updating our sidewalks and our curb cuts and our bump outs in downtown. It's a slow process, but at least any new building that's built down there has to be built to a standard. And similar to how in downtown right now, if you want to paint, you have to, if you want to build a new building, you have to have X, Y, and Z material. If you want to paint, you have to have X, Y, and Z color. Uh, if you want to have uh, lighting, it has to be a certain type. If you want to have a sign, it has to be a certain type. Things like that, that we want to have the, that same feel of downtown move across 257th and along Halsey. And we're not looking outside of Halsey. We're not looking up and down. We're just trying to focus on that corridor.
In the end, if it's a place that people want to be, all jurisdictions within this project, right, even the grant providers would be happy about that. That's something to point to. Hey, look, there's a success. And so that's the primary thing. Where do people want to be? Why do they want to be there?
So I think the last thing we'd want is something to go in on that corner of 257th and Halsey that is just walls on either side of 257th and Halsey and entrances that you pull into like a parking lot. I think we want to have it look inviting from the street. So you can walk in similar to downtown and expand when we do our first Fridays, have that you can expand that type, type of project, you know, type thing all, all the way through, so the downtown is extended in a sense. Or at least the feel of the downtown is extended. At least that's the vision that we've kind of discussed.
That sounds right on.
Right. If you look at Halsey now, it's dark. It's dark. I mean, it looks like a rural road.
You tell me how when the bus drives past.
Yeah. There's, there's, there's so many standards, the bus stop and the guy going.
Yeah. I can relate, cause I've seen that, yeah.
So it would be nice to have something there. It would be, it's a little unnerving if you, if your car breaks down, you have to walk along that street. I wouldn't want to walk along that street.
No.
And like I said, with the, the streetscapes project getting close to wrapping up, we have great designs that are coming out of that for what the streetscape will look like itself with, you know, sidewalks and ped and bike all included. Now let's focus off of the street and onto the building portion. And like it's gonna, when those eventually get built, that will, the street will look great with lighting, but now what's the point in having a nice looking street with bike and ped and sidewalks if we don't have anything that looks great on the sides? So that'll be a big project for us.
I've got another one for your list.
Uh-huh.
Uh, this is long term.
Yes.
Like for four, five years down the road. Facade improvement grant.
Who's facade?
Downtown.
And Marley Boxler and I have been talking about that too and working with, you know, possibly the Oregon Main Streets. Nonprofit and cause they have different programs that we could offer to downtown businesses and one is a facade treatment program.
Do they do the storefront grant?
The store.
Program. I know they did that in Hillsborough and that was huge in the main, uh, the main street going downtown.
We have to fund it. Is the thing, but the benefit is really outweighs the cost by quite a bit.
Well, planning staff, we look forward to working with the commission in this new year and, you know, getting some more projects under your belt.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
You'll be seeing a lot of us this year.
We saw a lot.
You'll be seeing a lot of us. You're gonna see more of us this year. Big projects coming down the pipe.
But you're easy to work with. I mean, we've had some that work. Not as easy to work with.
Well, thanks for the compliment.
I think.
Commissioner Priggin.
I'm serious.
I appreciate that.
We, we appreciate it.
I think you do a great job.
Yes, you do.
And we, as staff, we always welcome, like if you have questions, if you want to talk about anything, if you have concerns, you know, send us an email, pick up that phone. Because you as commissioners, part of your job is to, to go out to the community and to listen to the Troutdale residents about the needs of the citizens and that's what we want to hear. Cause that helps us do our job correctly.
So a lot of times people feel they can't talk to us for some reason. We try our best not to have that come across, you know, we, we try to be very open, but it's easier to talk to people who are their constituents.
Yeah, neighbors.
Yeah, neighbors.
Well, and I think it's because they think they, they don't. And I, I get this, I, in the beginning before I was on the planning commission, I had the feeling when I go to the city like, if I go to them, am I gonna say the right thing or I'm gonna do the right thing and I mean, I went for a permit one time and I couldn't get it out of my mouth. I had to go home and come back because I had to write it down. So, you know, I under, it's, it, it's kind of.
Intimidating. Yeah.
Cause you don't know the language.
Yeah.
So, so we're gonna be busy. Yeah.
Good.
I like it. Good.
I make a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Not yet.
No, oh, we have other things to do. Sorry.
Ms. Palmer, who first?
Start.
Oh, sorry. I thought you had communicated.
No, our, our next, our next meeting will be uh, February 11th and we'll have a hearing for the.
February 12th, yeah.
Yeah, February 12th for the FEMA standards.
Be exciting.
About, about what?
The FEMA standards.
No, I think planning staff, we, I mean, we have the same sentiments, but that, that's.
That's it? Okay.
I have nothing to add, except once again, thank you very much for your good work. Appreciate it.
You, you've suffered enough.
Who?
Uh, all of you.
Yeah.
Chad.
Uh, nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
Uh, no, nothing to add, thanks.
I, I have received the information on the 257th improvement project. Not very many people are happy about it.
No, you got that too?
Mm-hmm. Heard guys complaining already. They don't understand why they're putting in light pedestrian crosswalks on a street that has 18 wheelers going down and as soon as that light switches, those trucks are gonna have to stop and they're gonna stop. They don't understand why the lanes are being worn.
I have to run to my car and drive off quick.
Yeah. So they're not real happy with it. I know the speeds are a little hot, but traffic is already bad in 257th in the morning and in the evening. So that's just gonna make it even harder. Especially since a lot of the truck traffic comes that way.
That's why I say if there's, was, be any way
Yeah.
to, to just make that a continuation and let Halsey be free and clear.
Well, and we're proposing the single pedestrian crosswalk is too close to the light or one. The other one's closer to the high school, but they've already got two lights where they can cross. So I don't understand why they're putting another lighted crosswalk there when there's already two there. The students use all, both of those crosswalks. So there is no need for a third. And at 28th, it terminates, there is no continuation. They'd have to put two in because 28th does not continue straight across. So I don't know. It just doesn't make sense. But my neighbors are not happy. And so it's hard enough to get out of our neighborhood, let alone then you put that in and we're never gonna get out.
Yeah, they're very reactionary.
I would say their response was when we have talked to them has been, well, it's our street and we really don't care.
Until somebody gets hit and then they care.
They, they frankly, the people that I've talked to down there just really don't care what we think.
The staff.
The case studies that they use for this, what, five of them were in California. One of them was in Albany, New York. Those were the six, I believe. That they use for this type of a, a setup. Not that you can't do things that other people are doing, but it's kind of like
And why?
It is a freight corridor.
And why just this, this section of 257th? Why not all the way down? If they're gonna do it, do it all the way down, not just section by section.
Where?
All the way to Gresham?
All the way back through Gresham.
Well, because Gresham said no.
Yeah, I couldn't hear you in that same.
Well, why can't Troutdale say no?
Because Gresham took over.
The road authority.
Road authority, which, don't, please don't go there. But um, Gresham took over road authority and so they have control. They looked at it and they said, yeah, we need to do this. And the county has control of it here and the counties kind of said, well, we're bigger than you are and.
Well, if they're bigger than us, why don't they fix the issues that they already have on the other roads?
Cause that's not the way it works. Unfortunately.
And since we're talking about that, um, so Buxton kind of reminds me of like a slalom ski course when I'm driving down it because you're you're doing this all the way down and then as you go down by the RV park, you've kind of got the same thing. And I know it's two different groups, but it's kind of like, couldn't we have like done some of this when we didn't have the whole Stark Street Bridge thing going on? Because I think the people that are working on this could have been working on the Stark Street Bridge, cause usually there's like nobody working on the Stark Street Bridge.
I don't work for the county.
And if, if I know anything from sitting in.
No, I mean, if they told you anything, that's why I'm asking.
No.
Okay.
No.
If I know anything from sitting in some of the meetings, uh, is that they don't really, they haven't talked a lot about like the development, like the stuff going on in Troutdale other than the Stark Street Bridge. And the Stark, Stark Street Bridge was not a planned fix. It was an absolute necessity that came up.
Right.
You know, so I don't think that they were ever, you know, they weren't anticipating that. So they would have had their bandwidth, but now that's an out of, that's a absolute necess- necessity. So they had to pull some people in order to, you know, work on that and get that done, figure out the funding for it. Um, and get that fixed up, cause they.
The bridge?
Yeah.
Are they gonna have anybody down there? Like soon, maybe?
I think they're still, I think they're, they've been down there trying to shore it up. They've been just basically inspecting a lot of it. And now they're working on their design, uh, the engineering to make sure that they get the engineering done before they can move forward. They are, they get approval for expedited permits. So they'll be getting, everything will be moving forward in that route. Uh, they're just, they're doing the engineering now, so there's no one really down there right now, but they do understand, they make it very clear that it increases the amount of traffic going through downtown Troutdale and, uh, you know, that's both, uh, you know, a nuisance and uh, a, a, a traffic risk, hazard, you know, with pedestrians. you know, with pedestrians compared to the Stark Street Bridge. Uh, so they're working on it as fast as they can. They just need to make sure that they don't wanna rush the engineering portion, so they don't have the same kind of issue. But I think that's why they've, they've had to pull people from the other projects that they had in order to make sure to get that done, because it's only going to, uh, the longer that sits, the worse the other proj, the other issues you're going to get on their roads, like especially in the downtown heading down towards, um, Glenado and things of that nature.
There, there is a lot of work that goes into it before you actually see action.
They are hoping that it's gonna be done within six months is what they're thinking or something like that? I think it was six to nine months.
Yeah, and I, I believe they wanted to have at least a, a lane open for motor traffic in early spring, like March, early March.
They were talking like February and.
They're, they're trying to figure out where, I know in the last, uh, one of the last meetings I sat in with them is that while doing the, you know, inspection of the, the caving of the side, um, they noticed that the other side, while intact, is only, they only think it's going to be intact for so long. So it's best to redo that completely, um, cause it's starting to bulge slightly and with the amount of traffic. And if this har, if it failed on one side, they wanna sure it up. But they are, they don't need to completely rip it out and redo it. They can, um, kind of sure it up with form boards and then pour a bunch of concrete and that will be enough, but they just need to get the engineering proper. And they're probably waiting on timing for season, seasonal change, uh, with how wet and, you know, cold side type thing. So they don't need to rip it completely out and start from scratch, which is good, but they do need to.
Commissioner.
Sure things up.
Another question along Two-Fifty, are they gonna increase the lighting along Two-Fifty-Sixth? Cause that, if you're walking that, you cannot see a pedestrian at night.
I think.
The lighting is so poor, it's only on one side. And I've taken, uh, my daughter works with a lady that walks. I have had to take her home because she's afraid to walk. And she doesn't live, she lives by the high school and she works at the Shell Station. She have to walk to the, at, at night and it, she doesn't wanna walk alone.
I think they are.
They are, and I will, I will check that tomorrow and get back to you.
They're working on a separate project, separate from that, um, which is to, uh, update the crosswalks, uh, just that are existing and then also update lighting, removing a couple of street trees. I believe that, that's a project that's going, it's in kind of two sections, uh, from Halsey up to Cherry Park and then another section from slightly past Cherry Park down to, I believe, Stark, um, that they're trying to add lighting, uh, but don't hold me up, but I remember that they're working on. That's a separate project that's been, and it works longer than the Two-Fifty-Seven update.
Even when it's raining, you can't even see the lines, I mean, you, you can't see the lines on the road and you hope you're in a lane, because there's no reflectors or anything that tells you where you're at. And I would prefer, you know, to know where I'm driving.
Well, the lane will be small enough, you'll just have to hold your steering wheel straight.
You can't be out of alignment, is that what you're saying? So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Lemey moved on to city council. He left us. And the alternate was, um, Robbie Cottrell. And Robbie Cottrell declined, uh, because he's on TCAB and public safety.
And parks.
And parks. And he thought, he thought this was a little much, so he declined. And so, um, our options are to do a separate recruiting process to fill that vacancy between now and the end of June, which I'll just say I'm not a fan of, because that's a lot of work for a lot of people to go through and recruit, or we run with six, um, until July first, when we can go back up to seven. Does anybody have an issue with running with six?
No, I understand.
Yeah, I get it. Seven is a lot of work just for a few months.
And it's for one in, one position. You okay with that, Paul?
Yeah, I'm good with that, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just do that.
All right. Okay. All right, um, thank you for all your work and, um, I'm sorry that you're the bearer of bad news sometimes.
Between the state and FEMA?
I, uh, yeah, we're in pretty good, I feel like.
Well, frankly, I was, I was gonna say, for me, between the county, the state and FEMA, it's been a really tough day for local governments.
Yeah, for sure.
But we do what we can and we serve our citizens to the best of our ability. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for the seat.
I move that we adjourn.
So Zach, a second?
Okay, we have motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
That's for sure.